Good evening. It's 6:30 on Monday, November 23rd, on Monday, November 23rd, 2020. And I now call the Winton Woods Board Meeting to order. During this meeting, we ask that all attendees wear masks at all times unless speaking. With that said, our first item on the agenda is Item 1.02. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging us while we got the flag in place. The next item on the agenda is Item 1.03. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McGowan's present. Mrs. Rugliss?
Present.
Mr. Birdy. Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Culetti.
Dr. Culetti.
Present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 2.01, District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. Mr. Smith, you have the floor as I take my way to the podium.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I know we're in a cafeteria, but do you guys feel like we're at Paul Brown Stadium? Does it sound like that? Yeah, okay. So our first is Nico Antonio Pretocino. Take the podium, sir. Nico is our National Merit Scholar semifinalist. And I have a nice story to tell about him, but Nico is so prepared that he's going to give you a quick overview himself. It's all yours.
Hello, I'm Nico Pretocino, and I am the president and founder of Scholar Power, a teen nonprofit with the mission of promoting academic excellence, recognizing, supporting, and empowering student-scholars, and working to change the culture surrounding academic achievement. Here with me tonight is my 19-year-old sister, Aersa, the vice president and co-founder of Scholar Power. She was valedictorian in 2018 and currently attends Miami University. I'm speaking here tonight to inform the board, the administration, and the community about Scholar Power and to hopefully gain your support. I specifically want to talk about our free Winter Break Zoom series designed to help Winton Woods sophomores and juniors prepare for the rescheduled PSAT NMSQT in January. I can't stress enough how much this is needed. The PSAT NMSQT determines national merit winners, and Winton Woods has been sending students into this test blind. Even though teachers have worked hard to prepare students with the general knowledge needed, Winton Woods students are lacking the knowledge of what is unique about this particular test and how best to prepare for it. Without that specific knowledge, we are at a huge disadvantage when compared to kids in wealthier districts whose parents can afford to buy them expensive PSAT prep courses and private tutors. To use a sports analogy, no matter how talented an athlete is, and no matter how hard his trainers work with him on his skills, if you throw this athlete into a sport that he's never played and doesn't know the rules for, he's not going to do well. This is what is happening with Winton Woods kids. No matter how hard the teachers work to teach us the math, English, and other subjects on the PSAT, if we're thrown into it not knowing the rules, the strategies, and what to expect, we're not going to live up to our full potential. One of the main goals of Scholar Power is to help all Winton Woods students live up to their full potential, which is why we feel so strongly about our PSAT Zoom series. Since I have limited time to speak, I've made copies of the content I plan to cover in each Zoom meeting so you can look over at your convenience. My three minutes are almost up, so I'd like to leave you with these three thoughts. Number one, this PSAT Zoom series is greatly needed, and in my opinion, you would be doing a disservice to Winton Woods students to not do everything in your power to promote it. Number two, it won't cost you anything and won't require any work from you. I'm volunteering to do all of the work for it because I want to see my fellow Winton Woods students succeed. The only thing we ask is that the district promote it through communications. We welcome any board members, administrators, counselors, or teachers to sit in on the Zoom meetings if you feel that adult supervision is needed. And lastly, number three, I want to reassure you that I am up to this and that you can have complete confidence in me to handle this maturely and to provide a very valuable service to Winton Woods students. Do not underestimate me. Students rise to the expectations you set for us, and I have high expectations for myself, and I expect you to have high expectations for me as well. I can do this, and I can do it well. We are currently producing a video series on preparing for the PSAT that can be viewed on Scholar Power's YouTube channel, if you'd like to check it out. Also, feel free to visit our website at ScholarPower.org. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Nico, before you leave the podium, I think it's important for people to understand that it's not just based on academics all of the time. It's based on how many other things you're involved in. So can you share with us what kind of activities you're involved in at Winton Woods City Schools?
I am one of the two captains of the academic quiz team, captain of the bowling team. I'm doing a monologue in what would be the play, but it's a series of monologues we're doing. I do dance. Well, that's not at the school. But I... And then I run this nonprofit here. And there are several other things, but I'm kind of nervous, so I can't think of them at the moment.
All right. So all good drummers remember that they're percussionists, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. Very good.
I'm the snare squad leader in the band, and I am a section leader in varsity ensemble.
Bravo. So I wanted him to express a little more because sometimes parents think that it's all just about the academics, but it's about how involved you are in your school and how much you give back. So Nico is a prime example about how you give back and how to get involved and engage in other activities, not just the academic side, but the other part that makes us who we are. So thank you, Nico. Absolutely. Yeah, let's get his 19-year-old sister up there that you talked about.
Thank you.
Finally, Nico, you'll have a chance to come back and join us again at another board meeting because we recognize that you're a semifinalist, and hopefully that moves into the next category of being a finalist. All right? Thank you, sir. Our next award goes to... We had National Principals Month last month in October, and one of our administrators was under the weather, and he couldn't make it. And so I could see that he's still a little bit under the weather, but we'd like to have his supervisor take his award for him and take it to him, and that would be Dr. Martin. So Dr. Martin, who is actually his wife as well. That has to be very uncomfortable, your supervisor's your wife. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Okay, so the next one. And I wanted you guys to kind of bear with us because some of these awards should have been passed out in March, but because of COVID, we had to back off. And COVID is still here, unfortunately. But we didn't want the award situation and the ceremonies to go into the next school year of 2021, so that's why we have so many people here tonight. So please bear with us. And we will not think it's rude if people want to transition after they've received their awards. In order to give us a little more social distancing, we would appreciate that very much. So it's Jocelyn Lopez here tonight. Fantastic. Jocelyn wants to come take my place. So Jocelyn's piece just captured my eye, and this is the superintendent's award. And I'd like for her to explain a little bit about her piece because as soon as you see it, it just captivates you.
Good evening, everybody. So let me show you guys my piece. So basically, this piece is mostly talking about, like, everybody in general. You know how people tend to judge others? And so you see all these cactuses are different, but they're all the same in one specific way. So the quote that says here is, "You are beautiful no matter what shape you are." So all these cactuses are different shapes, but they all are the same thing. They were planted the same, and they grew the same. So that is what this means. So it goes along with the people. People tend to judge others because they're different. But everybody's a human. They were born the same, and, you know, everybody's equal. So, yeah, this is what my piece represents.
Bravo. Yes, where's Dan? So Jocelyn, one of the things that happened with your piece, it's going to be hung in one of our schools to... As a keepsake, and we'll keep it there until you are ready to graduate. I know you tried to take it home with you. That's why I stopped. Yeah. You were getting excited, so thank you very much. Actually, Jocelyn, it's going to be in my office, just to let you know. Mr. Denny? As our business manager, I'd like for you to get me an alarm that can be placed around that picture so it can't be removed. Okay? So it'll sound off. All right, thank you. The next recipient is Madeline Wilkie. Come on up, Madeline. Madeline's selection is... This is the principal selection. The principal selected this piece because when you see it and hear about it, it has a lot of character, and it is a very, very interesting piece about responsibility.
Okay, so this is mine. The ICE is like an organization that deportes people. And when the sun shines on it, it represents it melting and going away because it's not good.
It says, "ICE melts when the sun shines on immigrants." Here it is.
Awesome. Madeline, just to let you know, that one will be hanging in my office as well. All right? Oh, no, 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 get that. Come on. We'll get it back to you when you graduate. You know, folks, we rehearsed this about 10 times, and they know they should hang on to the art. I don't know how it keeps getting away. All right, Mr. Jaden Beaman. Is Jaden here tonight? Okay. Angelica Alvarez de Leon. Not here. Okay. We're moving on to the next part of the program, which is the Kiwanis Characters Key Award. And this award goes to a very resourceful young man by the name of Drayden Booker. Is Drayden here tonight? Yes. So this is what his principal says about him. "Drayden Booker is an excellent selection for the Kiwanis Student Award for resourcefulness. Drayden is a problem solver. He is a student that knows how to adjust to any situation and that uses... He uses his resources to succeed. Each and every day, he uses positive relationships with everyone in our building to gain positive rapport with his classmates and every adult in our building. Drayden is the type of student that people want around and that people want to have on their team. He's an amazingly friendly young man, and this shows when he arrives at school each morning with a smile on his face. His classroom teacher, Ms. Daniels, said that Drayden is a great leader in class and a valuable friend to all of those around him. He has the communication and people skills to positively impact everything around him. When he is unsure of things in the classroom or during the lesson, he uses the resources that have been provided to him throughout the year, both academically and socially, to master the standards to grow his reading, writing, and math skills. He is also able to solve his own problems this way. Drayden never complains, and he never gives up. His resourcefulness has allowed him to stand out among his classmates. The primary north staff is grateful to have a student like Drayden in the school. He is going to accomplish great things." And this is from one of our principals who transitioned on, Mr. Kevin Jones, but he loved talking to Drayden, and he understood that Drayden was a very, very resourceful young man. When I asked Drayden during our introduction, "Which parent created the level of resourcefulness?" Mom and dad didn't get a chance to respond. Grandma said, "It's all about me." So I just want to let you know. So there she is. So, family, let's get a quick picture, please. Thank you. Mr. Denny, as a fellow Kiwanis, you want to tell a little bit about what the Kiwanis and why they do what they do as it relates to our resourceful Mr. Drayden?
Absolutely. So it's my... Yeah. First of all, congratulations, and thank you so much for the great work you're doing and the impact you're making in our community and our schools. So the Kiwanis Club is a group that's all about empowering young people and celebrating young people and assisting young people in reaching their goals and aspirations. So I want to, again, recognize you for the great work you've done. Thank you, and keep up. We'll be watching.
Very good. Thank you, sir. The next Kiwanis Student of the Month Award goes to Alana Dietrich. Is she here? We'll save it for you. Okay? What about Michaela Adams? We'll come back. Skyline Teacher of the Month, Ms. Julie Helton. Moving on down. The Career Quest School Counselor of the Year. That's amazing. You know, I watch Ms. Jarenick, and I watch, and I'm very, very amazed about how engaged she is with all of her students. And I go back and I think about my own life. If I had Ms. Jarenick as a counselor years ago, I may be the state superintendent. So, thank you. So Ms. Jarenick is a counselor for grades 11 through 12, L to Z. The Board of Education congratulates Ms. Jarenick, who was selected as Career Quest School Counselor of the Year. She was informed by Career Quest in February as a surprise celebration with staff in the Winton Woods High School Media Center. Thank you, Ms. Jarenick. Okay, here's our new thing. If you're over 20, you have to say something.
I don't like being put on the spot. No. I appreciate this honor. I love working with our students here at Winton Woods, and it just gives me such happiness to see what I can do to help promote their success to their future. So, thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Our next recipient, amazing counselors as well, Ms. Kim Goins and Mr. Brad Tash. Ms. Goins and Mr. Tash are recipients of the College Board Counselor Recognition Program Awards. They were among 400 counselors selected for this honor from all districts all over the United States, as well as other nations such as the United Arab Emirates and Myanmar. So they're not just regular counselors. These are international counselors.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Like Mrs. Jarenick said, it gives us great pleasure to work with our students. Truly love being here. I would have been here forever, but truly enjoy watching them grow and seeing them take off and go to their next levels in life. So this is an honor for us, and we're grateful for it. Thank you.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Nice speech, Mr. Tash. So I want to go back, and I want to bring up an incredible young lady, Emmy. This is the president... The principal selection. Excuse me. So tell us a little bit.
So this piece is supposed to represent freedom. So the bird was trapped in the hands, and now that the hands are open, the bird is escaping.
Awesome. Hey, Emmy, I do have one question. What inspired you to draw that piece? Yes, come back to the mic.
So that piece was a topic for the Freedom Center? Yeah.
Good enough. We're hoping that... And I know Mrs. Denny is in contact with the Freedom Center around the clock. And we hope that once COVID dissipates, we'll get our district back to the Freedom Center to celebrate once again. Thank you. So we did have a Community Spirit Award for Ms. Kristi Hooper. She's not here tonight, but we will make sure she gets that award because she was an incredible resource person in the Transportation Department and made our lives so, so much easier. The next person that I want to bring up is an incredible guy. Mr. Denny and I are working very, very hard to be like him. And we asked him if... How do we get that uniform that he wears? And he told us all the things that he had to do. And Mr. Denny and I decided that we'll... We won't do that. So Mr. Jermaine Hill, Forest Park Department, Fire. We Thrive, Mr. Jermaine Hill. Thank you, sir.
All right, so first off, I want to say thank you. It's an honor, a pleasure, and a privilege to serve the community. And I just love Forest Park. Being the primary chair of our We Thrive team, I'm just a face, and not even that handsome of a face. Ms. Karina Denny, she's on the team. We have an awesome support system. That echo is killing me. But we have an awesome support system, and we're just trying to make Forest Park healthier, give the people not only what they want, but the treatment that they deserve. So anyone that's looking to join the We Thrive team, we meet every third Wednesday of the month. We'd love to have your energy. Come see me. I'm right at the firehouse.
Thank you for being an incredible leader in the community. Chief Hill, people think that it's easy to do this mic thing. Would you explain that it's a little harder than it looks, right? This echoing mic?
Oh, yeah. It was really throwing me off, like it is now. So that means you have tons of skill, sir. I appreciate you.
It's all in the mask. It's in the mask. Okay. So, Ms. Rugliss, that's the end of our District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions.
Okay, that brings us to Item Number 3.0, which is our recess. So we'll take a five-minute recess as we allow our guests to lead and reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. Welcome back to the Winton Woods Board of Education regular meeting on November 23rd, 2020. As we reconvene our meeting, our next item on the agenda is 4.01, Public Comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Seeing it as none, we will move on to Agenda Item 5.01, Comments from the Winton Woods Teachers Association. Do we have anyone?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Baker. Hello, Ms. Baker. You have the floor.
Good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Smith. At this time, WWTA would like to thank you for keeping us updated with the rapid changes to the calendar. We have tried and worked hard to transition to teaching from home. This year, if nothing else... This year, if nothing else, has taught us to pivot on a dime. We appreciate that you are looking out for the health and safety of all students and staff by having us work from home. We would also like to thank the parents who have been so patient with us during all of the changes. We are hoping that everyone has a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. It's a great day to be a warrior. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. The next item on the agenda is 5.02, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. Do we have... Yes, we have a representative. You have the floor.
Board members and associate... Uh, excuse me, administrative staff. I just want to say thank you for observing us tonight. I want to remind everyone to have a happy and I want to remind everyone to have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And I want to say congratulations to our counselors, Ms. Jernick, Kimberly Goins and Tashi, and also to our academic students who won all of the awards tonight. Please remember to safe distance and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon, and thank you for the chocolate. You always come through. I don't need it, but I just want to tell you thank you from the Board of Education. Sorry, Mr. Birdie and Mr. Coupalletti, I think I have double.
Mr. Denny? Not yet, but when you get ready to put the signs on his door, would you remind him his name is Tashi now? Okay? I heard that, Ms. Yonda Ferguson-Gordon, Tashi. I've been calling him Brad Tash all along.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number 6.01, the Approval of the Minutes. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to the minutes, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 7.01, the Treasurer's Report of the Financial Statements for October 20th. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, you have the reports before you. Just in summary, our year-to-date revenues for the General Fund were, are at $20.5 million. Our month-to-date revenues in the General Fund were $3.6 million for the month of October, which is basically our state foundation, and we also received our homestead and roll map. Our expenditures in the General Fund for the year-to-date are $16.2 million, which is running approximately 3% under budget for about $1.6 million. Our final statement is the balance in all funds for October 31st of $50.8 million. $21 million of which is the General Fund, $4 million still remaining in the Building Fund, and $20 million still remaining in the classroom facilities for the month of October. And that's basically a summary of the reports.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, are there any questions for Mr. Seymour? With no objections being heard, let the financial statements for the month of October 2020 be submitted for audit. The next item, 8.01, Treasurer's Investments for October 20. Back to you, Mr. Seymour.
Yes, our total principal investments for the month of October were at 50, approximately $51 million. Interest for the month was approximately $16,400, of which $12,400 was in the General Fund and approximately $4,000 in the Building Fund. It seems kind of low for the month, but it's all-in when some of our principal matures and some of our investments show maturity that we post the interest for the month. So the interest for the month of October was at $16,400.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Thank you.
The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, Resolution Requesting Authority to File a Modified Tax Budget for the 2021-2022 Fiscal Year. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, this is a resolution put together by the Hamilton County Auditor. And what it is, is to get permission from the Board of Education to allow me to file the five-year forecast as in lieu of filing the budget forms that were prescribed by the Hamilton County Auditor. So if you approve the resolution for me to file a modified tax budget, that gives me permission to utilize our five-year forecast for the General Fund when filing the budget. However, other tax funds will still be, have to be budgeted and presented for approval by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.03, Resolution Declaring Necessity of Leveying an Additional Tax for Current Operating Expenses. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, what you have before you is the Resolution of Necessity to Propose a levy to be put, an operating levy to be put on the May 5th of 2021 ballot. It's 6.95 mils, just as the last operating levy. And of course, this will be certified by the Hamilton County Auditor and then you would pass the resolution to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax for current operating expenses in excess of the 10-mil limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Aye.
Thank you. The next items on the agenda is 9.01 through 9.03. These are reports of the superintendent and no action will be taken by vote. However, time will be given for board members to ask questions. With that said, we'll move on to item number 9.01, School Reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Vice President, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board again for the three transition plans. The virtual experience, the face-to-face, that would be every day, and also the blended, because we're using them extensively. We've not had the pleasure of having the face-to-face every day. We hope that we will eventually get to that point. But we're going to transition back. We're not into Phase Four at this time, we're going to stay in Phase Two, where we're going to transition back to the virtual experience. We've heard all the different stories and we've seen all the data, the scientific data that talks about the spread of COVID in Hamilton County. And we do know that our colleagues up north, and we wish them well, their community is purple at this point and we're hoping that we don't get ourselves to that position. But we had to recognize the situation that was connected to our Thanksgiving break. And so you heard Ms. Baker mention the following, but it's very important for us to keep all of our staff and students safe every single day. So we are going to transition to a virtual experience for all student and staff beginning Monday, the 30th. And it will transition, that transition will stay in place until December 4th. In the event that we have seen some of the issues and some of the indicators are not as high, we may very well go back to our blended operation beginning December 7th. Please note, we will not transition to a full-scale every day in school before winter break. All right? So those are the reports. And Mrs. Denny has worked diligently to keep us all informed and keep us up to date with the calendar. So please watch the calendar. We have our paper calendar, but please keep your eye on the district calendar on the website because it changes often based on how quickly we have to transition due to the issues around COVID-19. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, could you speak a little bit more? Because I thought it was really important, the intentional planning of the virtual in the 14 days.
Yes, if you look at the calendar, those days actually are mathematical, where they are actual 14 days, which is usually the time period that you, a person would be out if they experienced COVID symptoms and actually had COVID. So the 14 days, when we looked at the calendar, it actually falls in line. So it's not an accident, it's very intentional. And the one thing that we had to figure out was how to start out with a clean slate, if that's possible. And it gives us our opportunity to move forward and we do it with a level of fidelity. The other part, Madam Vice President, is, you know, as people have mentioned that schools are becoming safer and we're doing our part and the mask and the responsible part that young people are playing, we still have to keep in mind that schools are not run by students. It's actually operated by adults. So if the adults are still having issues and they're being exposed to COVID-19, we have to make sure there are enough adults there to really support the children the way that they need to. So even though the children's section is not as heavy, the adult section was starting to become an issue, so we made a good decision for the entire district. I'd like to also commend with her full-time job, she also has a part-time job, Tanya Bray. Tanya Bray is the tracer for all children in the district and she's the official tracer that goes back and does all the tracing for every child that's been exposed to COVID-19. And she has been doing it without any complaints, at least in front of me, she hasn't complained. But I'm sure they might. And then the other tracer has been Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wilson is taking care of the adults through Human Resources and Legal. And then finally, these two reports get connected where they move on to our business manager, Mr. Denny, who consults with LJB. So we're making this thing a full, comprehensive opportunity to learn as much about COVID and the responsibilities that we have in the district and to collaborate and to work as a team to make sure that we're, you know, making sure that our district is safe for every child and every adult.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. You have 9.02, so you can.
Yes, the next part is 9.02. First read, New Replacement or Revised Policy. Policy number one is 2266, Non-Discrimination of the Spaces of Sex in District Programs or Activities. 3220, Professional Staff Standards-Based Teacher Evaluation. Policy 1520, Administration Employment of Administrators. Policy 1530, Evaluation of Principals and Other Administrators. Policy 2431, Interscholastic Athletics. Policy 3124, Professional Staff Employment Contract. And Policy 5200, Students in Attendance.
Thank you. Board members, please remember these are first reads. We will be voting on them in our next meeting. Mr. Smith, you have the floor for 9.03.
Mr. D?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be able to update the Board and our community on the progress of our new facilities. We have two new beautiful campuses that are well on their way. They are over 80% complete now, which is pretty exciting. So there's a lot to see every time you drive by or every time you happen to have the opportunity to enter the building. I'll briefly mention, just for anyone who might be tuning in at home or later on the broadcast, the recorded broadcast through Waycross Community Media, our district's partner. If you're tuning in later, you can catch an update every week on our district's website. Just go ahead and go to www.wittenwoods.org and scroll to the bottom of the district's homepage. You'll see a blue tile that looks like it's got a crane on it. Those are the construction updates on our new campuses that are coming shortly to a neighborhood near you. And the Weekly Blitz is posted there where you can get an update of the work that's been transpiring the prior week. So some great photos in there and also a quick description of some of the work. So always encourage folks to visit that page. There's also a variety of other information on that page about the construction projects if you're interested. So right now, again, the projects are about 80% complete. We're seeing a lot of finishes inside the building at this point. About 120 to 150, excuse me, 120 to 140 workers on-site at the 712. About 100 to 120 per day on-site at the K6. They're doing a lot of finishes, cabinetry, flooring, that sort of thing, completing cabling. And it's pretty exciting. So had the opportunity to have the Board visit last month. We've had the opportunity to have principals see it as well and also our executive team. So very excited to see different constituents be able to experience the building that's able to transpire as we move forward, as the construction continues to progress. So also, this evening, I have the opportunity, which I very much appreciate, to update the Board on contingency fund use, which is closely tied to the buildings. Because this is sort of our financial buffer, if you will. And you should have before you, Board, a report that discusses contingency fund use up to the date of November 13th. So it's a little more than a week old, pretty current. And basically, that report breaks it down by campus. You can see the K6 or the South Campus and also the North Campus or the 712. And it breaks it down into four different types of contingency funds. And it also shows where the fund started and where it is now. So again, I've mentioned a couple times that we're 80% complete because that's an important principle to keep in mind or an idea, that you want your contingency fund use to be roughly equal to your percent complete so that you can track and have funds remaining as the project progresses. So there's a hard contingency fund. And that one, if I could, just by way of explanation, share with you that that's for fixed assets. That's brick and mortar. It's physical tangible things that are going to be modified in the project. So the base budget of the buildings is about $48 million for the 712 and about $40 million for the K6. And then as you spend contingency funds, those values are added to the project and actually added via change order. There have been, by my count, 318 change orders between the two projects to date. So it's a relatively constant flow. Everything gets documented, everything. If you put an outlet in somewhere where there wasn't one before, that's going to be documented in a change order. These are high-profile public projects and as such, they have to be completely transparent. So in addition to hard costs, there's also soft cost. And in working with Randy Seymour's office, the Treasurer's Office, who is, they are fantastic, by the way, with their support, funds can be switched between hard and soft and working with the state as well. So soft cost is for things like fees and permits and utility costs for the buildings and the Metropolitan Sewer District TAP fee and all sorts of things like that. CMR is Construction Manager at Risk. That is our construction company's contingency funds. And so that's the pool of money that Skanska Megan has to use at their discretion. That money also belongs to our community. But it's in the hands of the CMR firm as caretakers. And so they will use those funds when they need to. But at the end of the day, those funds that are not used come back to the district in the form of other items to add value to the buildings. One of the reasons Skanska Megan was selected by our district is because they have an excellent track record of returning CMR funds to the owner, the district in our case. Finally, you have an LFI Alternate Holdback Fund. This fund is specifically earmarked to purchase alternates for the building. And it's LFI because those are locally funded initiatives, that's what that acronym stands for. And essentially, those are to add value back into the building as construction progresses. There's less risk, you can start to spend more of your contingency funds. So you can see that roughly, the amounts spent roughly match that 80% mark as the construction progress indicator. match that 80% mark as the construction progress indicator. There are some exceptions to that. And you can also see we started with a lot more LFI at the high school or the 712 than we did at the K6. And that's due to the presence of the auditorium at the 712, which is a large asset that I think the community and our staff and students will enjoy a great deal. It's really coming along nicely. So that concludes just my input portion. Happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Just so you know, we do not have an attachment to look at the contingency funds, the LFI. We don't have an attachment along with that.
Oh, okay.
So if you can share that out
Absolutely.
to the board and then we can, you know, pose any questions that we have. Since we're not voting on anything, I'm okay if the board members are okay with him sending that to us separately.
Well, you do have to approve the change order.
Well, that's...
I think what he did, did you combine the two, Mr. Denny?
Mr. Smith, the construction company elected to move with just the cabling that would not actually bring it to the board at this point.
Very good.
Yes. Thank you, though.
Yeah.
I think the
Change orders.
Report is under change orders.
It is.
Yeah.
We have a separate agenda item for that.
And it's certainly connected to change orders. Change orders are what actually caused the funds to be allocated and spent.
So when Mr. Denny was mentioning about the contingency, here's an example where we're thinking about putting up something that's going to be a technology advantage for our students. However, a wall has to go up. And so with the contingency, the cabling would already be there. And if we had the funds to support it later on, we would actually put that in, as opposed to tearing a wall back out and trying to put wiring in. So some of the things that you may see in the buildings may not look complete, but when the contingency funds are being utilized, that would actually give a complete picture to what we're designing.
Board members, are there any questions for Mr. Denny or Mr. Smith?
No, I assume the construction, that was down further. So I did find it, the paperwork you're talking about.
Oh. Yeah, it is. The contingency is in the change orders. Okay, I see the confusion. Okay. Seeing as there's no other questions, thank you, Mr. Denny. And we will move on to personnel schedules. 10.01, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Vice President, the recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignation. Schedule B, certificated staff. Schedule C, personnel, support staff. Schedule D, personnel, certificated and uncertificated. And finally, Schedule E, leaves.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order to approve schedules A, B, C, D, and E.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedule as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously. Now to item 10.02, change orders. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
The recommendation is to approve the change orders as presented by Mr. Denny earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. A motion is in order.
There's no change orders. It got accidentally, I think, the contingency got put under change orders.
Okay.
He's delaying the change orders till the next meeting.
But those are the contingencies that they have to still approve, don't they? What's in the, there are changes in the order.
I don't think we need to approve his contingency report.
Well, we have to make sure that they don't exceed the $50,000.
There's, okay, there's no change orders, though. Just so you know.
Yeah, what's in here? I just see the contingency fund budget report that Mr. Denny referred to.
That's what you would be approving, I assume.
I don't think we need to approve.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing that there are no change orders, we will not be approving anything for 10.02. And so now we'll move on to 10.03. Board members, this is the second read for our policies that was presented last week. So this is the second read of the policies presented, and they were replacement, rejected, or revised policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, the one to really be careful about, and we have to keep our eyes on, is 5611, due process and rights. There have been several cases with districts in Hamilton County as well as Butler County where because of the pandemic, students have been, like, not permitted to participate in athletics. Their grades are good, their behavior is great, they don't have any disciplinary issues, their attendance is great, which are all criteria to participate in athletics. However, where boards are failing to do their due diligence is when there is a situation based on students being exposed to COVID-19. Those students are entitled to have a due process and to talk about why they are not going to be allowed to be permitted to participate. So some of these have gone to court and judges have had an over, they've overruled a couple of districts because they failed to do the due process. The judges have also mentioned that if you did the due process, we would go along with you, but you denied the student his rights. Even though athletics is considered a privilege, students still have rights. Because some students have stated that this is my scholarship opportunity. I need to be seen by this particular coach. They're coming in to visit and you're denying me that opportunity. However, the spread of COVID-19 overrides it if you follow a due process. And we've had a couple of situations before, and I think it may not have been this board, where we had to give a student due process because of a substantial injury. And the courts didn't want it to bother it simply because we gave the student due process and said, you cannot participate because of this reason. Okay? So we have to make sure that 5611 stays on our radar because there have been some missteps in other communities about it, and I want to make sure that we don't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. These are certainly some interesting times. Board, a motion is in order and we can discuss afterwards if anybody has any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read, new, rejected, and revised policies as presented.
Second.
Has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions?
Yes, I have one. Mr. Smith, so have we never had any situation, because I looked at the policy and I saw how things were outlined, marked out in red and redid in green, we've not had any situations within Wynton Woods?
No, because Mr. McGowan, any student that's the, that's asked to sit out for interscholastic play has been given an audience with the superintendent. So it's not even made it to you guys. Because the parents, if they wanted to appeal, I've explained to them in just real simple terms, I am the first right of refusal. And based on the spread of COVID-19, I can't have you affect the rest of the team. So your child has been exposed and they have to sit out. The parents have been understanding, so it has not ever made it to the board.
I should have known you did your due diligence.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have a question. On the rejected policy, usually, you know, we, it's nothing to look at. It's just, well, actually, you have it. It says last modified by Norm Burkhardt. It's at the very end of the red page. I think you passed it. I just wondered, usually we have Niola or...
Yeah, Norm Burkhardt is Niola.
Oh, it was part of it. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That was my only question.
All right, very good.
Okay. It has been...
Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item number 11.01, the legislative report. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Vice President and Board, the hot topic today is the voucher. And there are 418 buildings that could be affected by the voucher. And so there was a meeting today with superintendents in my particular region. And one of the things that I mentioned to the superintendents, when people are talking about vouchers, vouchers are really supposed to go to disadvantaged youth who are not doing well in school based on their school's performance index. And one of the things that I offered to my colleagues, I would like to see the data that supports or rejects students that have transitioned on and they've received a voucher. How are those students faring in those other districts and those other schools? Because if they're not faring well, then that becomes a problem for me. And in many cases, students have been rejected and sent back to their home school and their scores have actually been lower than when they left. So that's a new issue that hopefully my, me and my colleagues can charge the heel together collectively. And then the final piece is many people are choosing the vouchers, and this is the part that we are worried about with the pass-through. There are some students have never been to our schools or any of the schools in those districts that we're talking about. They've never had any experience and those families are being able to take advantage of the vouchers, even though they can't prove that there was any hardship or any disagreement based on educational opportunities. And so we're saying, give us the fair chance to prove our worth. And then, of course, you know, some of the private schools do not have academic performances that are publicized. So we don't know how well those kids are doing. And then there have been several cases where those students have transitioned to another school, receiving the voucher, and their jeopardy, their academic graduation is in jeopardy, and they've been asked for those students to come back to their original home school. So we have a plea that says, if you're doing better, show us your results. And if you're not, then the issue about the voucher is really unconstitutional.
I know there's a lot of focus that is looking at the vouchers, is looking at the report card, looking at equity and how it is that we evaluate schools and the performance and how these vouchers are being used. I know OSBA, in the meeting that I went to for the Capitol Conference, there, there's some change in the language where we're advocating certain things to make sure that the vouchers do not, the vouchers do not rob school districts of funding. And something I'd never thought about, the pass-through, where there's kids who have never been to the district and, you know, there are certain assumptions and they're, on top of that, there's no evaluation of the schools.
Yeah. And the other part, the politicians that are leading the charge are not people who ever attended a public school.
Interesting. Interesting. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, are there any questions on the legislative report? Okay, we'll move on to 11.02. Mr. Birdy, you have the floor.
Yeah, I emailed everybody some documents for the Great Oaks report, which would include a board highlights document, a message from Mr. Snyder. There's a spotlight on students' report and the one Wynton Woods student who was recognized in there as the Scarlet Citizenship Award Wynton Woods winner was Serena Fields, who was in the Scarlet Oaks Cosmetology Program. Also, there is a committee of Great Oaks board members working on a diversity in the mission statement. It's still a work in progress, being discussed at the board level as far as what that mission statement should say. And then once that happens, there will be some more discussion as to what it means to the board and what it means to Great Oaks. So like I said, it's a work in process. And then in addition to that, there's a legislative report and an ACT, ACCP report. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call, send me an email, and I will do my best to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education motions and recommendations. Board, are there any motions or recommendations at this time? Seeing there are none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is 12.02, the cancellation of the special board meeting on December 7, 2020. Board, a motion is in order to cancel that. Do we have any, you want to give any background on it? We have what?
Yeah, we saw after a conversation with Vice President Rugless and Mr. Seymour, we saw that we had a meeting scheduled for the 7th and then one for the 14th. And we did not think that we would have new business that would, that would actually make it necessary to have a meeting on the 7th. We don't have meetings just to have them, but the meetings have to have a purpose. And so whatever we don't finish or whatever we would have put in the meeting of the 7th, it can actually transition into the meeting of the 14th. That is actually the recommendation.
Board, a motion is in order to cancel the special meeting on December 7.
Oh, finally, I'm sorry, Ms. Rugless. The other thing is, in order to cut down on the mitigation of COVID-19, the less meetings
Yeah.
collectively, the better, we think.
I agree.
I'd like to make a motion to cancel the December 7, 2020 special meeting.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cucculetti?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 13.01, which is comments of the Board of Education and the superintendent and treasurer. Mr. Seymour, do you have any comments?
None tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Birdy?
No, just again, thank you to the teachers, the staff, the parents, the students for all they do. I had the fortunate experience of working with my grandson in the remote learning experiment. And it's a challenge for the teachers and the children. So for everything that they're doing, I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Dr. Cucculetti?
I repeat what Mr. Birdy said and my congratulations to the students and teachers and administrators who won awards this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cucculetti. Mr. McGowan?
Yes, and I'm gonna kind of say some of the same things that Dr. Cucculetti and also Mr. Birdy said. We did not plan this in advance, but we are always kind of on the same page. I want to make sure I congratulate all the winners tonight. It's always nice to see our people being recognized for the fine work that they do, both the students and the staff. I also want to congratulate our fine football team, you know, I'm always got to throw some sports in there, for a tremendous season. I mean, they were really under some really tough circumstances and they did an outstanding job. And last but not least, I always want to thank our outstanding administrators, our teachers, our staff for the fine job that they do, again, under some really trying circumstances. So thank you to all.
Mr. Smith?
No, nothing.
Why echo everything that everyone has said and just want to say, I want to thank the entire Wynton Woods City Schools tribe in the fact that you have been very flexible in understanding that COVID-19 is, in dealing with the numbers and seeing the numbers going up and the families being flexible, teachers being flexible, I want to thank you for working with the administrators to try and find the best solution for our students. Also, I want to say, Mr. Smith and I had a meeting with our partners again at Mercy. It's good to see that they have remained committed partners for us. And we're looking forward to continuing that partnership with Mercy. It's very important to have that connection. I believe the president called Mr. Smith and had asked, you know, is there anything that you need or how's everything going? So it's really good to see that Mercy is also reaching out to us while we're reaching out to them. So that said, we can move on to item number 14.01, which is in the executive session. Board, there is a need for an executive session, so I want to entertain a motion at this time.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the sale and disposition of property. and disposition of property.
It has been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Who made the second, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I moved too fast, I was trying to get out of here. We need a second, board members.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
To our Waycross partners, given that there will be no action taken by vote, once we finish up meeting in the executive session, we will not come back out of executive session to this room. So when I adjourn the meeting, this will conclude our meeting, so if everybody is all aligned, hearts and minds are all aligned, I will call the meeting of the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education regular meeting on Monday, November 23, 2020, adjourned.